Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Excuse me, welcome to the Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023 Select Board meeting. We did have a little technical difficulty when we went into executive session. Guess we lost power earlier and the mics never came on, so you may have seen me talking, but nothing coming through. We apologize for that. This meeting is being recorded and taped by Foxborough Cable Access. And we have a selectman for the day. This is Ian, Ian Fitzgerald. Say hi, wave to everybody. Thousands are watching you right now, and I'm sure all your friends are, too. So Ian, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yeah.
Okay. We're gonna stand, turn right around, because the flag's behind us. There we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're already doing better than me. All right, so we can't have a selectman for the day without a proclamation, so we're gonna have our clerk read the proclamation from us to you.
Whereas since the formation of the commonwealth and the townships therein, many citizens have volunteered and have been selected democratically for the duty to represent their communities to the fullest of their ability, it is an important responsibility requiring temperance, fortitude, wisdom, and above all, a drive to do more for others than oneself. Whereas since the incorporation of Foxborough on June 10th, 1778, these individuals known as the Select Board have led the town through good and bad times, through the guidance and stewardship of the public interest, in safeguarding the values and traditions of this great community. Whereas Select Board Member for a Day requires the prestigious presence of the designee to honorably attend, open, and run the meeting with his charismatic charm, clever wit, and wisdom beyond his years, now therefore the Foxborough Select Board hereby do proclaim Ian Fitzgerald as a recipient of Select Board Member for a Day and the prescribed responsibilities related thereto. The citation is given under the seal of the Town of Foxborough on this 23rd day of May 2023. Congratulations, Ian.
We're gonna take a quick picture of it. You and I are gonna stay here. Would you guys wanna stand behind us?
Absolutely.
You get to hold it, or I'll hold it for you.
Perfect. Ready? All right. Help it on.
Mom? Mom, you wanna come up for one? Awesome. Ready for your first job? All right, so I'm gonna have you read that line right there. Yep.
Do we have anyone here for citizens' input?
Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to the next agenda item. So the next up is we, in executive session, talked about the new contract for our new finance director, so we'll go ahead and have you just read the next line right there.
Now, the Select Board will take a vote on the finance director contract for Marie Almodova.
Great.
Nice job. Very good.
The Select Board will now hear from a recreation director.
Oh, no, that's good. We'll stop there for a second, and then you go turn to the clerk and have him read the motion.
Motion to approve the finance director contract for Marie Almodova.
Second.
Go ahead and say, any further questions?
Yeah?
Any further comment?
Any further comment?
Nope, seeing none?
No, no.
Say, all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye. All opposed? Go ahead.
What?
Say, all opposed?
All opposed?
Seeing none, we have a new finance director contract.
We have a new finance director contract.
Yep. And you say, congratulations, Marie.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Marie.
All right. Congratulations, Marie, that's awesome. All right, what's up next for us?
The Select Board will now hear from Recreation Director Renee Tosi.
Yep.
About 2023 farmers market season on the Common.
Nailed it. All right, so that's her name.
Hi, Ian, how are you?
Good.
So I'm here to talk about the farmers market. I don't know if you've ever been, but we're doing the farmers market again on the Common this year. We have a couple new vendors. Some of the old vendors are coming back, the fudge lady who's super popular. We do have a new cookie lady, so I heard her cookies are amazing. Fairmont Fruit Farms will be back again with their produce. A new honey vendor and a couple of crafters that have jumped on board, so we're hoping to get 15 to 20 vendors each at each market. It starts June 1st. We have changed the time from 4:00 to 7:00, it's now gonna be from 5:00 to 8:00, so that maybe people who are staying for the J.C.'s concerts will stay longer and, you know, do some shopping as well. So we're back on the Common, June 1st to September 7th.
Awesome. Any questions?
No, just love the fudge lady.
Yeah, love the fudge. Is this our fifth year?
Yes, technically. It's been six years ago we started.
Oh, that's right, but we did.
It is our fifth year. That one COVID year we did not have.
Yeah, we didn't, that's right.
Didn't have the market, but yes, I'm so excited.
Let's pray for good weather.
Yes, I know, I know.
Last year was bad weather for the farmers.
It literally rained every Thursday.
Every Thursday.
It did. Yeah, so we're gonna do an event at each market again like we did last year. We have, we'll do yoga in the Common, art in the park. We do have Jessie from Toy Story who will come help with opening day. We'll do the petting zoo again, things like that, so it'll be fun. And all that will be posted on our website.
So this permit will change to 5:00 to 8:00 P.M.
Yes, please.
While we get to up here, you wanna mention where we were an hour ago?
Yeah, so we just had the ribbon cutting for the new pickleball courts, which are amazing. I'm super excited about them. It's really the first opportunity where Recreation and the Council on Agent got to combine for our multi-generational programs. I am absolutely in awe and shock of the overwhelming amount of people that love pickleball. They are coming out from everywhere. The minute I posted on Facebook that the paint was dry, I decided to take a ride down and see them myself, and oh my, there was a lot of people there playing already. Yes, we're getting fencing. Yes, there will be some benches. We ordered three eight-foot benches to go along the wooden fence that's there now. We have a couple picnic tables coming as well that'll be off to the left side. The fences will be on the back in the first end, and then one separating the three sets of court, the two sets of three courts. So that'll help with the balls going. We start lessons tomorrow morning. I have an overwhelming amount of people. We have two sessions in the morning with 20 people in each group, and then I have two sessions in the afternoon with 20 people in each group. Then we have a senior-only lessons that will start June 14th, and that's filling up quite quickly. And then we're gonna do some times where it's just reserved seniors only. That'll be Friday from 8:30 to 11:00, so it'll be good. And other than that, it's just kind of open play. I know there's an app out there called Team Reach, and people can just log into that and be, hey, I'm a, you know, intermediate player, I'm going out at 10 o'clock, anyone wanna play type of thing, but there won't be any set organized times. It's going to be no different than the playground or the tennis courts or the basketball courts, where you could just come and play and, you know, meet up with your friends and whatnot.
Awesome.
Yeah, and that's down at Payson.
Would you mention a few of the donors, too?
Yes, absolutely.
That made this possible?
Yep, so the Partners in Patriotism made a great donation, and the Stern Charitable Trust Foundation were the ones who are helping with the, their donation was made to do the picnic tables, the benches, and the fence. So, yeah, we're super excited. Yeah.
And when we went down there for the ribbon cutting, there were so many people there. I'm like, wow, so many people for the ribbon cutting.
Yeah.
Come to find out, they wanted us the hell out of there, so they could get on the court. It was all, three-quarters of them were pickleball players.
Yeah, absolutely.
Waiting for poor Mott to talk faster.
Yes, yeah.
Great turnout.
Yeah, so we're super excited.
Awesome.
Some good, exciting things going on here right now for Recreation.
Absolutely, oh yeah, we're ready for summer now.
And Council on Agent, by the way, yeah. Great.
Yeah, it's a great collaboration. I'm really excited about the whole multi-generational thing, and it's been great. I was just saying to Mark earlier today, it's been nice where, you know, some of the seniors have called over to the Rec Department to help with registration and just getting to know them, and, you know, then it was nice to put a name to a face being down at the ribbon cutting, so that was good.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, good luck, Ian.
All right.
Next agenda, next on the agenda is a public hearing of a transfer, transfer of an, on premises alcohol.
Premises, yep.
Premises, all alcohol beverage license in Common.
Vitualler.
Vitualler and seven-day enter.
Entertainment.
Entertainment license application.
Yep, nice.
Of the Harp Patriot Place at 200 Patriot Place.
Very good. Okay, the Board of Selectmen acting as local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023, beginning at 7:15 P.M. in the Gala Meeting Room Town Hall, 42th Street, Foxborough, Mass, on the application of a transfer of license of an on-premises annual all alcohol beverages license from CBS Scene doing business as CBS Sporting Club, 200 Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass, to Route One Hospitality, Inc., doing business as the Harp Patriot Place. Brian Burke, General Manager, all interested parties are welcome to attend.
You're on.
Fantastic. Good evening, Mr. Chair, honorary board member, other board members. It's nice to be here before you again in my second home, this Select Board hearing room. I'm Tom Miller from McDermott Coltine Miller in Boston. I'm joined by Brian Burke, the proposed manager of record. I am also joined by a full complement of the Briar Group's team, showing you the dedication to not only this location, but their other existing location in Foxborough, and how they take this responsibility seriously. As was stated, this, we are here for a transfer of an all alcohol beverages license from one corporation to another to be exercised in the same location at Patriot Place. We are converting the former CBS Sporting Club to the Harp. As the Board is aware, this, the Harp is an institution in Boston located directly across the street from the Garden. This, they've been operating here in that location for over 40 years, and this team, as you can tell, is excited to be bringing this concept down here to Foxborough, to Patriot Place specifically, in a very unique location, located in this, in this very unique location overlooking Gillette Stadium. This is essentially the view they will see from the outdoor patio, and there's really, you can't beat it for what this, this brand and this concept embodies. They are very familiar with the unique challenges of operating so close to a large sports venue. They've been doing it for 40 years at the original Harp, and they've been doing it for, math isn't my strong suit, that's why I went to law school, about five years in Patriot Place. They took over the former Toby Keith and have been operating it as Six String ever since they took it over.
That's why they look familiar.
That's why they look familiar.
That's why you guys look so familiar.
So they have not just a unique understanding of how to operate outside a venue like this, but also how to operate specifically outside of this venue. They are aware of the unique challenges it poses and how best to review and address Here, you can see the overall floor plan is basically staying the same. There are no major renovations overall. The risers being ripped out, seating is being rearranged, and is being rebranded to reflect this change to the Harp at Patriot Place. Just to give you an idea what it is going to look like, we don't have full renderings, but we do have these inspirational pictures, which will give you an idea of how it is gonna feel both inside and outside. This does have a patio that overlooks the stadium, so this, this kinda gives you an idea of what, what that inspiration is. There we go, helps if I push the right button. The proposed menu here is derived from their experience, both in Boston and at Patriot Place, and will be, as the state's, an elevated approach to game day food. It encompasses everything from a quick bite to eat prior to a game, or as you are, you know, on your way to one of the other establishments in Patriot Place, or after you get out of one of the many fitness centers, or any, you know, if you wanna have a full sit-down meal with sandwiches, salads, full entrees, it runs the gamut and gives you pretty much any option within, with, you know, any option for a good meal at, in an elevated pub-style atmosphere. As I've said, Brian is the proposed manager of record. He is a U.S. citizen. He is very familiar with the rules and regulations. He's very, he's very experienced in the food and beverage industry, specifically, he has been at Patriot Place for over eight years, both at Toby Keith and now with Six String. He will be moving from Six String to the Harp. This team is also very familiar and will be backing him up in ways that I, you know, would be very jealous of if I didn't work for this group and was opening a new restaurant, so. He is also familiar with not only the A B C C rules and regulations, the rules of the Commonwealth, and the, but because of his time at Patriot Place, he is familiar with the towns' rules for the sale and service of alcohol and beverages. So just one more, this is kind of what you can expect from the food and the atmosphere. And so we wanna thank you all for hearing this application tonight, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
From the Board?
No, usually I have something to, something to ask about, about, you know, your experience, but honestly, that's, it's all there already, so, as I'm concerned, it'd be nice to see another great establishment coming up there, and wish you all the best.
I had my 25-year-old son told me you guys were coming to Patriots Place before even I knew. Got a text from him, heard the Hops coming to Patriots Place. I'm like, no. Two days later, we got to notice that you guys are, and both my 25- and 28-year-old are very excited you guys are coming up there.
They have a very good marketing team, very good at getting the word out.
Yeah, so I was a little embarrassed, but that's okay. Ian, how about saying that again?
Do we have anyone here for citizens' input?
Since this is an open meeting, anyone out there from, wanna comment? Okay, seeing none. Close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those, what'd you say? All those in favor? All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye. All opposed?
All opposed.
None. All right, so public meeting is closed. Go on to the next.
Motion to approve a seven-day all alcohol beverage license for Route One Hospitality, Inc., doing business as the Harp at 200 Patriot Place.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All those in favor?
All right. Aye. All opposed?
All opposed.
Seeing none? That's great.
One more.
We do have a common Vic license as well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Common Vic in entertainment.
Sorry. We should read.
It's overrated.
It's overrated. Here it is.
Motion to approve a common vitualler and seven-day entertainment license for Route One Hospitality, Inc., doing business as the Harp at 200 Patriot Place.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Aye. All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye. All opposed?
All opposed.
Seeing none? Now you're done. Awesome, congratulations.
Thank you, members. Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Oh, do you have a potential day you're opening?
Looking end of June, potentially the week of June 19th.
Awesome.
Potentially.
Yeah.
If all goes to plan, so.
If all goes to plan. Luckily, not a lot of renovations, so.
No, it's coming along quickly.
Awesome.
Everything that's on, on track.
Good, looking forward to having one.
Even, as we all know, even minor renovations go smoothly.
All right. All right, great, thank you very much. Thank you, good luck, everybody. All right. All right, so last big one, here we go.
Now we'll hear from Land Use and Economic.
Economic.
Economic Development Director Paige Duncan-Bilden.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Scott Shippey and.
Conservation.
Conservation Agent Jane Pierce for an update on the Land Use Department.
Awesome.
Nice job, Ian.
Thank you, Ian.
Nice job. So it's up to you, Ian, at this point. Nothing personal against them, but if you wanna sneak out, now's a good time, but you can certainly stay if you want to.
I'll stay.
You'll stay? Awesome, they'll be psyched.
Who wouldn't wanna hear us?
I hear ya. Lot of pressure.
I know, right?
Such a draw, Paige.
Exactly, exactly.
See, it's how everybody else left.
Yeah, I know, it's my big crowd here.
Just working her demographic now, right?
Yes. I know everybody's watching on TV, we have a big, big draw. So I'm Paige Duncan, I'm the Director of Land Use and Economic Development. I have Scott Shippey with me and Jane Pierce, they'll both be speaking, so don't worry, I won't be doing all the talking. So we're going, we watched all the, I've watched all the other presentations, and I got the loud and clear message that succinct is good. I also feel like you guys kinda have a good idea of what this, and the townspeople probably have a better idea of what our department does than others, so we're gonna kinda whip through things and give you an overview, and then after that, we figured we'd leave time for questions, 'cause, you know, you always wanna hear about what's going on. So let's see, so Department of Land Use and Economic Development, we have 10 employees in this department. If you recall, there was a reorganization, so we're now no longer individual departments, but we are the Department of Land Use and Economic Development, under which falls planning, building, conservation, and zoning. So we have a great group, we're upstairs on the second floor of Town Hall, and we have offices next to one another, so we're able to collaborate closely, and it's really worked out well. Whoa.
Whoa. Oh, that's cool.
Did I do that?
Fancy.
Just for one on the side.
Okay, am I doing this wrong?
Just, just the button on the, the round side button.
The round side, okay, there we go, sorry about that.
Okay.
So if you recall, last year we did restructure. Previously, we were three separate, well, actually four separate entities, and the benefits have really proven, at least we can see it in our office, and we're hoping that the residents and businesses see it. We are seeing enhanced customer service, it's a lot more cohesive, you know, a lot of times, one person will be at our counter, and we'll say, oh, we need to talk to Scott, and then we'll go, meet us at the next counter, and we'll race through the office and go over there, so it's really worked out. You know, we've always, Jane and, and planning have always been together, so that works out well. So we're efficient, and again, the communication, we never really lacked in that, as you can probably imagine, but we, it's really worked out well with this cohesive approach. And we did get one grant as a result of this innovative approach. We got our IT grant from the state last year, or earlier this year, for 200, almost $200,000, and they, they noted our innovative approach to land use, so. I will say, we're not the only one, there are some other towns that have done this, but it is definitely on the sort of cutting edge of land use departments running it this way. So grants and earmarks, I know financial matters are always really important to residents and to the Board. We've raised, actually, today we got a couple new ones, so I don't think I, I don't, we didn't update that number maybe, but $9.2 million in grants and funding since I started in 2015, well, 2016, really, it was December 2015. So we've, we've been very successful, as you can see. In fact, we got notified of two more grants yesterday relating to our tourism effort, and in fact, I can give you this, I only have one, 'cause they're, they're going to press, but if you wanna pass this down.
Thank you.
I'll get a mic. That's our tourism effort, and it's really taking off, and so we just got another $270,000 grant from the Mass Gaming Commission yesterday, and we got a mini-grant from the state of, Meet State, the Meet the State program, it's a mini-grant, and we think it's somewhere in the value of 30,000 to 40,000. It's really, we don't know yet what the quote's gonna come out at, but it's, we're gonna create a digital visitors guide, so it's been really exciting, and it's been one that obviously has received quite a bit of funding. The state and the folks at the Mass Gaming Commission and the Tourism Board have really supported that. So we've also been successful with Walnut Street, as you know, that project is going on. So mentioning Walnut Street, what have we been doing lately? We've been working heavily on the Walnut Street Housing Authority project. That was approved two weeks ago, or I was gonna say last week, but I was away, so it was a week prior, so that's 200 all affordable units for 55 and older and disabled adults will be run through the Housing Authority program. We also support the Zoning Board on the Moore Street project that was approved. We work heavily with the Foxborough Common Business Collaborative and any business, really, coming to town, in town, anybody who needs help that, you know, we support that. You've probably seen our wayfinding signage, we continue to work on that. We have new crosswalk signs up by Shovel Town, we're trying to respond, we are still waiting for the flashing lights.
That was a great idea, by the way.
Oh, good, thanks.
Those signs on either side to say, use the crosswalks.
Is it working?
I have to know. I still saw a couple of people walk right by those signs.
Yeah.
And wait for traffic to stop.
Hopefully, it changes a few minds.
Yes.
We're never gonna fix everything. And then we've been working on uptown parking, as you know, and so we've really, I think we've all experienced the sort of increased energy uptown, and it's only gonna get better, so the Rec Department and, you know, all the folks over at Human Resources, Human Services have really worked hard over there. So this is our, our website for our tourism effort, it's visitFPW, Foxborough Plainville Rent Them, and as I said, so we applied for $600,000, we only got 270, so, kinda lame, but, you know, we put in the whole amount to see where we got, and we're really thrilled with what we did. We also are now classified as a Silver Level Mass Bio Community, and what that means is just, like, R and D-type uses would be more likely to look at a town of Foxborough, 'cause we've, we've passed a few thresholds that make us desirable for R and D, and if you recall, Route One is seeking to attract some R and D. Hasn't worked yet, but we're working on it. And then most recently, we've also been working with the Asset Review Committee at Town Meeting, we just voted to have the, this Board actually will have to decide what to do with the Pratt School and/or ask the Asset Review, you know, we have to work on that project now that the Town Meeting voted to dispose of Pratt School, and then the State Hospital is currently, the Auditorium at the State Hospital is currently under evaluation by an architectural firm, and we also has, had a hazmat assessment done. I can say that the hazmat alone for asbestos is at 250,000, so that's just a start, so we know it's gonna be pricey, and then, once we have all that information, I think Seth is on that committee, will be working to make a recommendation to the town, you know, is it something the town can use? Is it something the town's better off disposing of? What, what cost-benefit analysis? So we'll get to that next year with the Auditorium. With that, I've spoken enough, I'm gonna hand it over to Scott. It's this butt, not that one.
It's not.
Not that one.
Good evening, folks. I'm gonna make it down, quickly as possible. Building Apartments has been really, really busy. I don't know if everybody knows the North End Zone renovations, that's taken most of my time right now. You should take a walk by there, it's kinda cool. So that's been ongoing since, what, last June?
Since you started, right?
Yeah, June is actually when they started doing the structural steel, and within 10 months, they pretty much got a lot of it done, so they're still working on the interior finishes as we speak. A couple of other major projects that we had, we had 29 Wall Street, which was a three-story apartment building that was just down the street, that was massive, they just actually got their COO the beginning of this year?
You think about a month or two ago.
A month and two ago, so they're up and running. They have a 5,000-square-foot commercial building that's vacant right now, but it's ready for a tenant fit out. Another, a couple of things, the old terminals, that was converted to like a movie production Another, a couple of things, the old terminals, that was converted to like a movie production theater, where they had, they just filmed one season of Julia, that the HBO series there, which was kind of neat to see the sets there. It's kind of, and they're going to hopefully have more movie theater, movie production there coming up. Everybody knows Shovel, Shovel Town in Station One just opened up. That's a mixed-use building, two-story apartments above, restaurant and pub on the first floor. Couple of mom-and-pop shops that opened up, like How Sushi, Bon Me, and Everything Bagel. They're up and flourishing. I see them, they're packed to the gill. And apparently, we're getting a new one, the Harp, that I, I didn't know about. So there's more. Also, at the North End, at the stadium, the old building P was demolished, and a new four-story building was put up there for football operations on the first. And they're probably projecting the second floor, but the third and fourth floor are for the Craft Group. So it's now called the Craft Group. And just to give you like the numbers, which we'll switch with that button. I got it. We brought in about $1.9 million in permit fees in 2022. With the first apartment, with the help of Paige getting that grant, we, we've got a new online permitting software, which is permidized, and it seems to be up and running, running perfect right now. Well, not perfect. I hate to say perfect. We had a long discussion today, but at least we can have conversations with, with the full circle, and they're, they're, they're meeting our needs so far. With the help of the board here, we did increase the permit fees also. That was, they haven't been increased since 2011. We still continue working with the Fire Department on the annual inspections. Those include five-years inspections, which is the multifamily, and the annuals, which is the, the alcohol licensing. I think we have like a hundred, hundred of those in town. It's, it's a lot. And we're just working closely with the Fire Department and the Health Department on, on multifamily houses and trying to get them into compliance. So other than that.
He's not doing much.
Not doing much.
All right, Jane, it's this button.
I'm going to hand it over to Jane.
And I will note for those, just because, when you, you say you raised 1.9 million in fees, and then you say, oh, we raised the fees. That's a very large number due to the North End Zone. That is not something that is on the back of the rate payers. Yeah, so that's not something we see normally. That's a very strong peak because of the North End Zone work.
Yeah, all the, all the, all the construction that's being down at Gillette right now is, has contributed to that 1.9. And they've got multiple permits on that stadium right now that contributed to that, that amount.
Hi.
Bye.
As you know, I'm Jane Pierce, and I am Conservation Agent. And so we've been, I was tasked last year with finishing up the open, the update of the Open Space Plan, which is, updating it is not as easy as it sounds. It's, it's a, there's a lot to it. So we did receive approval, conditional approval. So we're, we now qualify for grants with the state. And there are a few more things that need to be tweaked, and so we'll have to be doing that pretty soon. But we adopted a bunch of policies to address issues that we find happen over and over again. One is the hazardous tree removal policy, which means if you have one tree and it's hazardous, and the, you have an arborist say that it's hazardous, hazardous, then they can cut it down if it's within, within the 100-foot buffer zone. And they're supposed to replant with other things as well. And then there's the Beaver Management Plan, which they're coming. And they were wreaking havoc up in the state forests for a while, and I, I haven't been up there recently. But they can be interesting creatures to deal with. I like them, but they're, they can be a problem, so that gives guidelines for that. And then we get a lot of lakefront filings, and now a lot of lakefront filings are taking the little old house and raising it and then putting a big one. So we, the commission asks the same questions over and over and over again. So we put it into a lakefront policy so that people can look at it and say, okay, this is what I'm going to expect. And the commission can, you know, ask the same questions over and over again, but that kind of helps. And then we've been having a lot of problems, especially during 2020. I think a lot of people were naughty in 2020 because they're at home and they're looking at all the things that they could do in their yard, which weren't necessarily okay. And so we have some encroachments onto conservation land. And I have to get together with Paige and figure out a way of doing it. We came across one particularly egregious one, and, and I got to get rolling.
Side button. This one, right? Nope, next one. To the right. Yeah, that one.
That one. Oh, okay.
That'll make it easy.
The middle. Yeah.
Light up a green one, and that's not the button.
So we, one of the best parts of the commission's role is to educate the public. And so we've posted as many things as we can, and we make guides and all that sort of stuff. So why don't you take one direction, then pass them down? So we've got the Guide to Foxborough Conservation Land and Open Space, which was initially created by an intern of mine, and I threw all the stuff at him. I said, I'd like to look like this. I wound him up and I let him go. So we're on the fifth edition now, and, you know, we tweak it a little bit every time. Our GIS Person Extraordinaire at the DPW, Ryan Norton, recently put together a Conservation Land Story Map. And we had a bunch of different maps before, and they each had links that went to other places. But I think when he changed over to the new website server, or whatever they are, a lot of them broke. So in any case, we've got this one main place for this story, story, they call it a story map. And you just push the buttons. They'll bring it up. They'll show you pictures. They'll tell you what's there, and it's pretty cool. Lane Homestead brochure and trail, that's, that's our flagship. We're kind of proud of it. And so the information in there is one of the brochures. If you haven't gone there, I recommend you check it out because a lot of people say, I've lived here forever, and I never knew it was here. Lot of waterfront on the reservoir and native plants and some stuff. So that's, that's good. And then, you know, guide, so that when people come in, they can pick them up and say, what are the wetland laws? And then a big thing that we're trying to work on nowadays is protecting your lake from stormwater because all of the lakes are eutrophying around here, and stormwater input and fertilizer and all that stuff. It's all about knowledge is power. People, people who live in a lake would never knowingly want to pollute their lake. So it's all about if you do this and this.
Can I ask you a question on that, Jane?
Sure.
So just thinking about water cleanliness and quality in town, in the ponds, lakes, rivers, what have you. But my brother lives in Pembroke on a, on a pond, and it's like, it's a swimming pond, and it's like vacation. I'm sure people would love to go back to whenever it was, the 50s, when you could jump into a, a lake or pond in Foxborough and swim. You know, you still see the, the old, where they would have the swing off the trees around it. Is, do we know anything about the quality, the change in quality, or the potential to improve it? Like minimize fertilizers and motor oils and stuff from getting in there?
Trying to get the word out. And, and all I can do is, you know, keep telling people about these things and having all of these things on the website and our little brochures. But I always say, knowledge is, knowledge is power. It's all about education, the importance of the buffer zone, and actually the Nippon Reservoir, from what I'm told, now that the dam actually holds water and they've got, they've been working on it and such, it, it's much cleaner than it used to be.
Okay.
And it's, it's a work in progress, and it's all about education, you know? And, and when I see the lawns going down to the waterfront, and then the people have weeds that they need to have treated, I, the evil part of me wants to say, well, we can do it everywhere else, but not in front of where there's grass.
Yeah.
So I don't think that'd go over well, though. And then living with wetlands brochure. So the website, and at this point, does need to be updated a little bit. But we've, I've put all of my favorite and most interesting things, I think, onto the website so that anybody, including my commissioners or residents, can look online and kind of learn if they're interested.
So what's next for us? In the Planning Department, the big one coming up is the MBTA Communities Act. That's a biggie, and this board is going to have to deal with it. I just want to warn you and the residents that this thing is coming. The Attorney General's Office doubled down recently and said, towns cannot just choose not to do this. So we will be working on zoning for this housing, one way or another. We don't know yet whether the MBTA station will become permanent or not, and that will affect our numbers. But this is a big deal, and it doesn't look like the new administration is backing off on this at all. In fact, I think they're digging in. So we are going to have to address this one way or another. And I look to this board to really, you know, working with John and me to figure out how best to work with the community on this. Because we all know how people feel about more housing, especially high density. That said, we're not being asked, we're being told, and how, you know, how do we want to handle that? So we'll, we'll deal with that another day, but I just want to warn everybody that this is coming, and the clock is ticking. We do have an interim action plan. We are in compliance for a bit now. But we do have to take action on that, and we'll have to start talking. Barney and I talked about it today. We're going to, in July, we're going to start talking about the zoning. We figure in the September, we'll probably have to start some sort of transparent, open process by which this gets discussed as a community, because I don't think the staff should be deciding this. I don't, I don't know that your board wants to decide it. I don't think the Planning Board wants to be a unilateral decider on this, so buckle up.
Might be brought to like the polls somewhere along the line.
I don't know that it'll go to that point, because the problem is, is we, it's not an, it's not, we can't ask. I mean, we, you know what I mean? I think if we went to the polls and said, how do you feel about this? They're going to say, very badly. You know, we're, we're not supportive, so.
And they don't care?
No.
They do not care.
They don't care. Yeah, I've heard that from a couple of communities now, and there's really no guidelines yet.
Oh, no, there's a lot of guidelines now.
Oh, there are now?
Yeah, in fact, they just came out with a model, and communities are passing the bylaws. So that makes it hard. I mean, in some ways, you're kind of looking around going, well, who's going to, who's, who's going to stand up? And it's like, wow. I mean, all but seven communities filed action plans. So seven communities are sort of ahead of the fight. We have an action plan. We have time till like next spring. We have to bring something to Town Meeting. I mean, we should. And that will take months. I mean, we all know this is a big zoning effort. We do not want to do it in a vacuum. So we kind of are coming up into the fall timeline. It could possibly slide till the fall Town Meeting next year, but we'll have to see. Because they've also told us, if it doesn't pass the first time, you're expected to go back again and again and again. So.
Without getting too deep into it, do, do we have a general number?
Yes, it's either 768, you have to zone for, you don't have to build, but you have to zone for 768 multifamily units to be allowed by right on no less than 50 acres. Or if the commuter rail becomes a permanent commuter rail sta- station, and they reclassify us as a commuter rail community. Right now, we're an adjacent community. That would increase the number to 15%. So then we need something, I think it's 1148 units zoning.
So when you say 768 multi-units, you mean?
Apartments, or how, like houses.
So 768 is the number of residences?
Total units.
We must, yeah, minimum. We have to prove that we are zoning for that minimum. And if it's an adjacent community, there are some parameters on location, because they want it walkable. They don't want you to stick it in the woods, all that, but it's, it's a little more flexible. If we become a commuter rail community, then it has to be within a half a mile of the commuter rail. So that's why we do have decisions that will, you know, we need to make those decisions after we have the information on the commuter rail. So we can only do so much, but I think we can start talking about it and start duking it out.
Basically, it has to be multi because we probably don't even have the space to, to build 768 homes.
You have to build a high-rise or something.
So you have to, you have to go multi.
Oh, 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 forgot that one. It has to be at a density of a minimum of 15 units per acre. So yeah, that's very dense. The lodge and the domain are about nine and 11 units per acre. So we're talking at that density. Now that said, with the 50 acres, you can have mini districts in there. So you could like, if you wanted to do one high-rise, I know, none of us want to do that. I want to go on the record as saying that. But I'm just saying, you know, if you did one really dense pocket over here, then you could have maybe less dense areas, all part of that 50 acres. But the net has to be the 50 acres minimum and the 768 or the 1148. So.
Silly question.
Yeah.
What if there's no property around there to build? You can zone it, but is there property?
They're not asking you to, this is solely zoning. So, you know, you can zone existing buildings. Because basically, they're saying, well, if the market warranted it, it would, you know, it doesn't preclude it. Someone might go tear down a two-story and put up a five if they, the zoning allowed it. So there are certain areas in town not eligible to be a district, things like roadways and wetlands and municipal properties. We did try to look at the stadium, and we were like, maybe we could put the district over the whole stadium. That didn't, that was excluded. We tried. We were being really creative, trying to find ways. We're like, you know, I mean, you said we could put it over buildings, and so if this craft group wanted to tear down the stadium and put up housing, they could. So that won't work, so.
I mean, it seems like, it seems like, at least from up, from up at the, with the crafts and from the stadium, they're, you know, a good example is just Taylor Swift, you know? I mean, they were able to bring a lot of people in, get them off the road. So I would guess that they want that to, to stay as permanent, but say it didn't, are we still? I'm, I'm not sure if I'm correct in reading before. Are we still considered to have to do something because we have Sharon Mansfield? So if you're also a surrounding community, there is a number for that, too.
Yeah, that's what we are. So right now, we are not a commuter rail community. So the fact that we have a pilot program has nothing to do with the fact that we're, we're in this. We've been an MBT community for decades, unfortunate, I mean, fortunately, unfortunately. So we were in this no matter what. Adjacent is what we are now. But again, if that train service, and we don't know how they're going to decide whether the train service, the pilot ends in August. No one really knows, even at Mast Dot, how the decision is going to be made. So, and then, once they make the decision, how long will it take to formally convert us to a? So there's a lot of questions, but we are under somewhat of a timeframe. Because at a certain point, they will declare us out of compliance. And then, you know, we're, at first, we were like, well, we could absorb a few of those budget hits, you know, and try to cover it because it's going to be less expensive than the housing. But now, that's when the AG letter came out and said, it's not just this. It's, it's more. And the more towns try to resist it, they're going to have to double down and, and really come after funding.
What, what is your next deadline to pass something proposed?
Um, I committed to try for Spring Town Meeting. I think I could slide it a little, but, well, let me put it this way. I thought we were being late, and then when I looked at everybody else's plans, they're all kicking it down, too. So I'm like, well, we should be later because we have a commuter rail pilot. So, you know, I might be able to buy an extra six months, but maybe not. I think it's going to depend on so many factors. But I think we all can be doing the conversing, because whether it's 768 or whether it's 1148, you know, I mean, I think either way, 768 is a tough pill to swallow. We'll have to figure out the best location for that.
Do you have any insight as to where the Craft Group stands on this kind of development in the permanent?
I do. Um, I get the sense, they've told us they're not, this, you know, they're not in the housing business. So they weren't necessarily looking to do this. That said, they do have some land. I believe they did a market study that showed that they could absorb about, I think it was, I'm going off my memory, 200, 250 units. So they're basically saying, you know, we, we might be open to some of this, but we don't necessarily think we could do 768 because we don't know that the market would support it. So I don't know.
A lot of their lands are already committed to other?
Yeah, but they do have land over by like Ashcroft and that area. So that's the, you know, that's an area that might be looked at. I mean, and then we also have, then there's parking lots.
Yeah, I was going to say, what about the parking?
No, there's parking lots as well. And then that would be their decision, you know, structured parking is extraordinarily expensive. They'd have to decide if they can handle losing parking for housing. So again, that's, we'll have to probably, if they're, that's the location, and, you know, if it's a commuter rail community, that will be the location. If it's not, then we'll decide. But that might be the least impactful location anyway if we're, have to do it, so. But there's a lot to be discussed. So, all right, now I'm going way over. Master Plan update, just to warn you, the last master plan was done in 2015. So I put in a request for the capital budget for next year. So I, and I'm applying for some grants right now, so we'll see. But I just wanted to get that on everybody's radar screen, that we might have to start, well, we have to do an update. And then we're going to continue with Uptown revitalization. And then Scott mentioned permidize the software. Planning and conservation is going to be moving into that. Right now, it's Board of Health, Fire, and Administration that are moving into it. And then we'll, we've never offered it, so we're going to be the last to do it. But that was all part of that grant. So we are going to be also going on to electronic permitting. And then Jane's going to finalize that Open Space Plan and will deal with encroachments and all the other millions of issues that come up. Yep, and then Scott's.
In my spare time.
Scott doesn't have much to do. He's going to be in the room.
No, he really isn't.
So, and that's it. So I didn't leave as much time as I wanted to for questions, but anybody have any questions?
I have a couple. Anybody else want to go first before I, I always steal the show first anyhow, but.
Cool.
Anybody else want? Just a couple of questions that people that saw that you were coming on the agenda. What's going on with the property at Chestnut Street? Is it going to be? Yeah, was it going to be a, someone told me, I don't know if I just, this just went right over my head. Is there going to be a, a little hotel or a motel or something right there?
Oh, 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 over on, behind Conrad?
Yeah, like where, where the, where we have like the pop-up tap.
Pop-up, yeah. Doug King had proposed an in there.
Uh-huh.
Um, but we didn't move forward on, it was too late in the zoning cycle. I don't. I don't know if he's gonna try to...
So, might circle back, but right now, nothing?
It might, it might. It's not something on the table right now.
And the other question I had is, is kinda Jane and you page, a little combination. So, um, I was playing catch-up, reading, uh, my reporters, and, um, I read that whole big article about the contamination down at the bleachery, which, I mean, obviously, we've heard, but how is that affecting now the Moore Street project? I, as I was reading it, and I thought maybe I wasn't reading correctly, it was basically saying that there is contamination there. Is that, is that, am I reading it wrong? I mean, I know it was a, it sounded to me like it was a, a college student, right? Because he was doing this from, you know, he went to UConn?
UConn, UConn, yeah.
So, but, reading it, I mean, he talked about the past, you know, which we all knew there was a past down there, but the way I read it was, he was like, basically saying that it is contaminated. Is that, is that true or...
How long ago was that? How long ago was that?
It just came out.
Yeah.
No, it's...
I don't, was that, was that last week before, or the week, or the week before, maybe?
I think it was last week.
Um, over the weekend, I just happened to, I have like four or five that I hadn't even touched yet, so I was just kind of skimming through, and I saw it, when I was reading it, and I said, "Oh", I said, "Maybe I'll", so, I wasn't, I wasn't really sure where, where that was, where it was coming from.
Right, so, we always knew there was a potential or some contamination on that site. That site is not the 119 Moore Street. They did do testing on 119 Moore Street prior to applying, and then they came in and they did testing during the hearing process?
Yeah.
And there will be continued testing before they are allowed to put a shovel into the ground, like, and then throughout the entire thing, if they come across anything, immediately, they would have to report it, I mean, they have to anyway, but, um, so, I don't think that affects it. We've always known that 131 is a problem. Matt Brennan is your resource on that, he's the, the point person on that right now. Um, we are continuing to work on it, but I think the general gist is it's two separate sites, there's always been a concern over here, and they checked over here, and...
Okay.
So, I don't think it precludes that.
Well, that's what I thought, but reading it, that's why I was like, "Am I missing something here?". Because, I mean, it was just like, "There is contamination, there is", and I'm like, "Okay", I'm like, "I thought we had some testing done", and, you know, so I wasn't real, I wasn't really sure how that was, you know, the, the way I read it, you know, and I'm like, "Okay, am I missing something here?". And I thought maybe I met a, missed it, I missed a couple of meetings, I'm like, "Did I miss a discussion on it or something?".
On 131, um, I am, I did have the, um, an order out to demolition, demolish the, um, Duke's Place, because it is an unsafe structure. So, I'm working with Duke's.
Which one is that?
Right in the back.
Okay.
Right in the back, behind the, is it Summit?
Summit Casting, yeah.
Yeah, Caskin, it's right behind it, it's connected to that. Um, I'm working closely with the Fire Department and the Board of Health, and that's, that's another...
Yeah, we got a lot of those.
Major, major thing that we're working to, yeah, collab, doing a collaborative effort on trying to clean up and get, get safe.
Jane, we should have had you way back when, when they would, when they were doing all that dumping, you would have been right on, right on top of that.
I would hope so, except, yeah, we, we didn't know these things. We didn't know these things back then, and so, you know, the wetlands are evil and have mosquitoes, so let's fill them with stuff.
Yeah, pour your oil in there.
I mean, think of how the laws have changed.
You know, I, I had heard, uh, the, um, space behind Conrad's, at one point, with Doug King, was gonna be a daycare center or something like that.
Yeah, they approved it, but unfortunately, the daycare walked away. The financing, the, the interest rates killed it.
Because that area is a real ice war now.
I know.
I know, so, I'm sure it's...
We were also gonna have a daycare in front of the, um, 29 Wall Street, but that pulled...
They pulled out of that, too.
Yep.
Probably you got the people that are, they're staying home now. You know, there's a lot of people staying home to work, maybe, maybe the need isn't, you know, it's quite like, like it used to be.
Although, try working with kids in your house. Oh, yeah.
Little ones.
Not you. You clearly can handle working.
We got one more for him, he, he doesn't know about the next one yet, but he'll enjoy that one.
He's gotta go to bed.
Uh, any other questions? Great presentation.
Just real quick, Schneider, any, anything on Schneider, that space, or just, mum's the word at this point?
John and I have to get together on that one.
There's, they're still working on cleaning it up.
Yeah.
So, that's, uh, I met with Paul Hearn over there a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, they're just, they, they haven't decided what to do with it, uh, in part because they need to get it cleaned up.
Okay.
Well, that's another biggie.
Yes, but that was a big article in the paper, too, about Schneider this past week, bringing a lot of stuff back to the US, so maybe, didn't mention Foxborough, but maybe that, uh, will bring some stuff back, but, thank you very much.
Thanks for having us.
Great presentation. Guys did awesome.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, sir.
All right, one more. You'll like this one.
This is a good one, then.
Yeah, this is a good one. Read, uh, this one.
Where?
Read this one.
Day...
Oh, no, up above.
Common...
Common Victualers.
Victualers?
Application.
Application, ice cream beach club...
Say that one, say that one a little louder and again.
Ice cream beach club review and vote on a common victualer.
Victualers. And?
And day?
Seven-day.
Seven-day entertainment license for ice cream beach club at 10 Mechanic Street.
You know what that means? An ice cream place at 10 Mechanic Street? That's the one you were waiting for? All right.
Is this a topic you want to talk about? Yeah?
We all want to talk about it.
Yeah, who doesn't, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, tell us about it.
So, my name is Sarah Gibson.
Yeah.
Um, so, ice cream...
Gibson sounds familiar.
Yes, it may. Um, so, yeah, Ice Cream Beach Club. So, this would be an ice cream shop on 10 Mechanic Street. Um, the front lower space of the building would be the commercial space for the location. Um, it would be a seasonal shop, so, um, obviously, you know, ideally, come next year, I would open a little bit earlier than this year, since, you know, we're just trying to get things going. Um, so, I think ideally, there's still construction going on, it previously was a, um, an office space, um, so, construction, you know, is in progress, but the plan is to hopefully open maybe in the next month or so, ideally. Um, you know, I would be great to have it, you know, sometime around, like, when the start of summer is, um, because everyone wants ice cream in the summer, you know? Um, and then, I guess, just let me know, any questions that you guys have for me or anything you want me to go through, I can answer for you.
I think personally, it's outstanding. I mean, DQ's DQ, but real ice creams, right, real ice cream.
Yeah, and I grew up, so I'm from Foxborough, I grew up, you know, after school, going to Friendly's, and, so, the ice cream that I will be serving, so, I'm not making the ice cream, um, it's a distributor, which, no relation whatsoever, but the, um, name of the dairy farm is called Gibson's Dairy Farm, which is really cool, yeah, and actually, one of the owners of the shop is Sarah Gibson, which is just, it's just crazy, um, how that worked out. Spelling a little bit different, but she's got the H at the end for Sarah, but, um, so, yeah, so, the ice cream will be made specifically at the shop, it will be delivered, um, every Wednesday, um, and then, um, it will be the toppings, um, and then, just like waters and sodas and things like that at a reach-in fridge. Um, and then, everything is to-go, so, there's space to sit inside and space to sit outside with a little front patio, um, but it's, it's an eight-ounce cup, and then a waffle cone, and then a larger-sized cup, and everything would be to-go. And there's also gonna be a, um, a, a container, that's a four-flight container, that would, would, um, for like four scoops of, um, ice cream, but in a to-go manner. Um, so, that's that. Anything else?
Any questions?
Yeah.
Do we have, um, is, so, a couple of things that, like Doc said, I think outstanding, I think, I think, um, other than the bakery, this could be the next big thing that people are looking for here?
Yeah.
So, a couple of questions I have just about the area, and I know, you said, like, when you were a kid, you guys would go to Friendly's?
Yes.
So, do we have a plan for, um, the traffic? Like, are people gonna be parking and then coming over? You're gonna have kids crossing the street? You know, we had a kid get, the kids run across the street to get to Cumberland Farms and stuff, so, have, is, have you had some, any discussion, like, maybe with the police chief, or as far as safety, or, um, just because I'm thinking that might be something that might follow?
Yeah.
Because the kids are gonna, you know, and, are they gonna try to park on Mechanic Street, or, um, or, you know, like, I know we have, you know, we're working on parking around the common, of course, we can park and, and walk to, walk to your shop.
Yeah.
So, has that been kind of going through your mind, just, you know, the safety issue, where this isn't something that's gonna attract kids?
Yeah, of course. Um, well, I think one of the things that is, what is probably, it's hard to find, I guess I would say, um, in the center of town, is this place, actually, this, this 10 Mechanic, where the, um, ice cream shop is, it, we have our own parking lot. So, that will, so there's gonna be, um, it's also gonna be five one-bedroom apartments in that same building, so those, though, you know, there'll be five spots that are specific within the parking lot to those residents, but aside from that, the rest of the spaces are for the ice cream shop, so I think that is ideal, because most of the shops at the center of town, you know, sometimes it's kind of, you know, they don't have their own assigned parking lot, or it might be a little bit more difficult to find parking. So, in that sense, there's that parking lot specific to the building, and then there's, as you guys know, at, you know, within Mechanic Street, there's the street parking there, um, and then the parking lots around. I haven't spoke specifically to the police chief and things like that, but that's definitely something that I would do, just to, especially like during, I mean, it would, I, you know, I assume in the summertime, things are busy, kids are walking around, especially, um, as the, the weather gets nicer, um, but with an ice cream shop, like you said, you know, that will attract kids, and safety is top priority.
And you know, it seemed like, because in my head, I think of every time, like, I'm driving home from work and I'm driving by IDQ, and it's like the cars and all this stuff.
I know, it's crazy, yeah.
But for you, obviously, this is walk-in, there's no, you know, so, I mean, that'll alleviate any problems with backups of traffic or, or things like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, love, absolutely love the idea, just, just thinking in my head, some of, some of the issues made, that might come from it, and, um, I know how you, how you guys work, I'm sure you're gonna work through everything, and you'll go all through the right channels, whatever, so, just something that I thought to, thought to bring up, but,
Yeah, definitely.
But completely support, support your venture, 100%.
Yeah, that's a good point, though. How many parking spaces do you have?
So, it's, I believe, 17 total spaces, and then five would be assigned to the resident, so, yeah, the rest, about 11, yeah.
Close to a good month, yeah.
Yeah, so, and that, that was like one of, I mean, I, so, just to kind of give you maybe, I don't know if you're even interested, but like, kind of a little bit of a backstory, so, um, I have been wanting to open an ice cream shop since I was probably his age. Um, so, I always said someday I would do it, like, you know what I mean? That was just like a goal at some point in life, and, um, I think this, obviously, with an ice cream shop location, it being, you know, ideally walkable, especially for kids and things like that, um, and with our town, we're currently, um, I mean, I guess, considered to be Dunkin' Donuts, there is the, the Baskin-Robbins, but we're really kind of missing that just standard ice cream, hard scoop ice cream shop, that's just a standalone shop. Um, so, I think, um, that that was something, you know, just the fact that there was that, you know, this building available, um, to be able to use the space to, to put this ice cream shop in, that was when I was like, "Okay, this is meant to be", and then the fact that it had the parking, just to me, just kind of tied it all together, and then, obviously, like I said, the location itself is just ideal, it's, I think, walking to every school except for the borough, um, and then, obviously, like, the booth and just, you know, um, wherever the kids go. I mean, it, but it's not obviously strict to just kids, I mean, we all know that, I've never met a person that doesn't like ice cream, it goes from, I say my age range is like one, two to 100 and, or, you know, over 100, if you're still, still having a, kicking it at over 100. Um, so, yeah, so, um, so, yeah, it's something I've always wanted to do, so I, um, I, my background in terms of my degree, so I have a business, I, I graduated, um, Business School, Bentley University, with Business Management. Um, I have a full-time job, so I'm doing this on the side. Um, so, it's just something that I, very, very passionate about, like I said, since I was maybe even younger than him, um, so I'm excited.
Seth?
Uh, yeah, so, for me, it's gonna be a little too convenient.
Yeah, right behind the back door.
Both of you, too, you're frequent flyers.
Yeah, yeah, we both could.
Sorry, did you mention?
Oh, so you might have to recuse yourself, come to think of it.
Oh, for...
You have a question, but then I won't.
Yeah, send a butter, then he should.
Yeah, yeah, because you're a director butter.
Okay.
Okay, good thing we, good thing we brought that up. We wouldn't want anybody listening.
It's gonna be a softball, but never mind.
And there, by the way, too, in terms of, if any, because I know, one of the first questions I get asked, or what people are interested in, is like, "What's the flavors"? So, there'll be 16 flavors, um, and I have the website, it's icecreambeachclub.com, and there is, the flavors are on the tab there, if you're interested, I have it here, too, but, I feel like that's some, something that, that's interested in.
Oh, yeah, what are the hours?
Okay, so, right now, um, so, seasonal, like I said, the hours would be, right now, Mondays and Tuesdays, it would be closed. I, um, just want to start off, not doing seven days a week. I mean, obviously, things subject to change, especially, you know, as we figure things out and how things go, so Mondays and Tuesdays would be closed, um, Wednesdays and Thursdays would be three to nine, um, Fridays would be three to 10, Saturdays and Sundays would be 12 to 10. If Sunday, we wanted to do nine instead of 10, that's just the estimated...
Yeah.
Kind of thought process behind, um, the hours for right now, and obviously, like And obviously, like I said, subject to change, but that's the plan for right now.
If, so if, when we go ahead and uh, if we approve this and she wanted the hours to change, would she have to come back and?
It's a seven day.
Okay, it's just, yeah, cuz what I was gonna say too is, you know, I mean, I'm just thinking of the foot traffic you're gonna have when there's events going on. And say there's something going on in the common on a Monday night or a Tuesday night or something, you know, then, you know, you might wanna say, hey, you know, this week, you know, put a big sign in the open, we're open Tuesday night this week or something. Just to take advantage of, you know, the, the foot traffic. And there's so much buildup uptown now that uh,
I know.
I think you're hitting it at a great time, at a great time, really are.
Right, I know, and speaking of too, the center of town, it's nice too, in terms of like, we have the, the, you know, the, the small amount of inside seating and then the patio seating, but even just the center of town, there's the benches, people can sit there, grab, you know, grab an ice cream, sit and walk there and, and enjoy it. Or um, you know, wherever uptown.
I have one other question, are you gonna be able to taste the ice cream? Like, are you gonna have little tasters?
Yes, of course, yeah.
I'm looking at all the flavors, I'm like, I don't even know which one I would check, they're all, they all look fabulous.
Yeah, your sample tasting, we will have that for sure. Sometimes people just wanna kind of taste all the flavors and then, they already know, like, they walked in there knowing what flavor, but they were like, can I try this one or this one? Just, you know, you just gonna.
Just in case.
Face it, yeah, but yes, we will have that, of course.
Well, good, good for you, you know, living a dream that you've had for a long time.
Yeah.
Good for you.
And the neon sign, um, that's planned for the inside of the shop, um, you know, here, there's always little sayings on the neon signs, LED neon signs. Um, it's ice cream makes me happy. It's something that I've, just, I just say all the time and I just feel like it's just, I mean, even just, I feel like your, your smiles and your faces, everyone. You know, everyone lights up with, with ice cream, so, yeah, so I mean, I'm excited cuz like I said, it's, you know, it's a dream and, and goal that I've had. But I'm just happy to bring that to the town too, cuz I think ice cream, whether you're, whether you're sad and you wanna eat ice cream or you're happy and you're celebrating, it's just, you know, it just puts everybody in a good mood, so.
Just because. You could be overwhelmed by the response, actually.
Yeah.
You have to drive quite a ways to really get a real ice cream.
I know.
In this area.
Yeah, yes.
All right. Okay. Motion to approve a common victual and seven day entertainment license for Ice Cream Beach Club at ten Mechanic Street.
Second. You know, you wanna recuse yourself.
Oh, yeah, he can't.
I'll second it.
Any further questions?
All right.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, all those opposed?
All those opposed?
None, and one recused.
One recused.
Awesome.
Nice job.
Good job. All right, congratulations.
All right, thank you.
All righty.
Yay, yay, well there, hopefully.
All right, you know, Ian's uh, gotta go home and have dinner. And his brother's looks like wicked tired too. And uh, thank you.
Came in, I was.
Oh, here's your proclamation, Ian, and we wanna thank you very much for helping, cuz this was my first day as chair and uh, thank you. There you go. Awesome.
Thank you guys.
Thanks, Ian, bye-bye. You did a great job, Pat, yeah.
Have a good night.
Now with him gone, I don't know what to do. So, next on the agenda. Uh, come Vic, uh, board committee and commission, commission reappointments.
So, this is your annual appointments and reappointments?
Yeah.
In the, uh, actually, in the agenda itself, as an attachment that was posted, is the listing of all the names and positions that you're making your appointments and reappointments to. Um, so you do not need to read them. Um, so the motion, uh, we just reference these. You're probably going to need, uh, at your next meeting, kind of a second round. Not everybody got back to us, uh, so we do need to get these reappointments on an annual basis taken care of. But there'll be a few stragglers we'll take care of at a subsequent meeting.
Okay, any questions? Awesome, no questions.
You're up. Motion to approve the annual board and committee reappointments as more particularly described on the posted May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three agenda.
You're not recused anymore.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, none. All right. Open meeting law, uh, complete, response?
Uh, yes, so um, we received an open meeting law complaint, again, from a gentleman in Alabama. Um, this, uh, according to the law, you have fourteen days to convene a meeting and to discuss it. Uh, this particular complaint pertains to our March twenty-eighth meeting. Uh, under the open meeting law, you're required to approve your minutes either thirty days or for the next three meetings or thirty days, whichever, whichever is the latter. The idea is that your minutes get approved in a reasonable timeframe. So, uh, the board actually did, um, from, from the meeting on the, uh, March twenty-eighth, uh, you did approve those minutes at May ninth. And in accordance with, uh, open meeting law, uh, nine forty CMR, uh, you are well within compliance. So there is no violation. So by consensus, uh, I would, uh, drafted a response that basically states that. And um, on behalf of the board, I'd be happy to send that out. There is no, for the record, there is no violation.
Great.
So is his, um, his complaint, so he, he just never should have made the complaint? He was incorrect in, in interpreting?
Yes. Yeah, the only point of confusion could have been, remember, we did post a meeting, prior to town meeting, that was subsequently canceled. So, uh, so the, our May ninth meeting was our third meeting, so.
Okay, awesome, we don't have to vote on anything, we just go ahead and send it.
Nope, I'll take care of that tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, right into town manager's update.
So a couple of things, uh, one, we do have, uh, on September twenty-third, um, this will take place on the town common. This is the Foxborough Rotary Club's Peace Day. It's in support of UN Peace Day and the Rotary is going to have programs on the common, uh, including creative interpretations of what peace means to individuals. So, uh, that'll take place, uh, September twenty-third from twelve to five P M. Um, the rain date is, uh, September thirtieth. Uh, and then we've got a few things that have happened in terms of staffing. We have a few, uh, new additions and a couple of departures. Um, one, we've, uh, welcomed Nancy, uh, Cazella, who is now our collections coordinator in the finance office. We've had quite a few folks that have started new down in that particular office. Uh, we also have Alma, uh, Alag, Alag, Algalaro, who is, uh, she previously worked as an assessor's assistant in, um, the town of Borough, Rhode Island. So she now is gonna be joining us as an administrative assistant in the finance office, specifically working for the assessor's, uh, division. And then thirdly, we have Corey Goldrick, who is a, currently a sergeant at Norfolk County Sheriff's Department. And Corey is going to be coming over as a lateral transfer to, uh, to be a police officer for the town of Foxborough, which is great. Uh, she had a lot of experience, apparently has been working the events in Foxborough, around Gillette Stadium for many years. So she's a, a known entity and, and frankly, I did a quick interview and, uh, I, I think we're a stellar hire for the town. Uh, then we have a couple of departures, we have Officer Charles Gallagher, who is retiring after thirty-six years with the, uh, Police Department. And then one that is a little bit bittersweet for us, uh, Lieutenant Ken Fitzgerald is resigning, but he's resigning for a good reason. He is now going to be the new chief in Belling, in the town of Bellingham. So, uh, sad to see him go, uh, obviously Chief Grace thinks highly of him, uh, but it's nice to see somebody if they're going to leave. Uh, we can't make him chief here, the only way for that type of advancement is to, is to move. Uh, so, uh, so we wish him well and, um, and, uh, and our loss is Bellingham's gain. And that's all I have on the, uh, on the updates.
Awesome. Were we, um, gonna have Chief make a presentation?
No.
No, he's just here to listen in, okay, great. Um, yeah, great for, uh, Lieutenant Fitzgerald, that's, uh, good for him, that's, that's awesome. Um, under a selectman's update, um, the, um, select board schedule, one of the dates changed.
Yeah, so, uh, on the July date, the originally July date was the eighteenth and we're looking to move that on the eleventh due to some scheduling conflicts.
If you guys are okay with that, that's really the only change.
That's the only change from the existing schedule, Leah did communicate, Leah Gibson did communicate to me that that date works for her as well. So if everybody's in agreement, uh, that would be the only date change in the schedule.
Okay. Um, weekend, uh, event recap, it was, uh, you know, I, the concert was phenomenal. She did a great job, the Swifties, as they're called, um, thought she, uh, she, she was just phenomenal. My son and daughter-in-law went Saturday night.
Ryan as well.
But, uh, you know, even the torrential downpour couldn't dampen the spirit of, of the people out in the audience, they just. And I gotta tell you, Taylor Swift was getting just as wet as everybody else. There was no cover in her, uh, stage at all and she was, uh, uh, did a great job. Um, I know, I, I live on Main Street, um, I was not affected any of the three days, uh, by backup traffic. Um, I thought Friday, all of them would be the worst with commute, um, there was no backup. It was, uh, yeah, sure, if you want to. Uh, I think, you know, there were certainly, I think the rain probably slowed things down around traffic wise. But, um, you know, as Chief told us earlier, that, um, you know, they were ready, they were prepared and, uh,
Yeah, I figured if on, if the agenda says weekend updates, there should be probably someone here to answer that.
Can I tell you an observation I have before you go? Cuz I'm, I'm really, I'm so glad you're here, cuz I'm wondering if you guys swapped anything up. So, um, I worked a double Friday, double Saturday, double Sunday at the Red Wing Diner, so right on Route one. And like clockwork, I think Saturday, it was just slightly later, at one o'clock, dead stopped in front of us as far as I could see. And at about six, quarter of six, not a car in front of us, right? So, except on Sunday, it seemed like the traffic was, it was almost like I was wondering if they changed something with the lights, like in Walpole, which I don't even know, I, I know the state police handles some of that stuff, right, Chief? So, I'm not even sure, but it was like, all of a sudden, the cars were all going and we'd see no cars. And then it would, then obviously a bunch of cars and then they'd all go. So, but, you know, it, it was, you know, it, it's getting, I don't even know if, it's more people than a, than a home football game, is it? Cuz they use the, because they use, oh, I guess you lose the end zone, but because they're using the floor, you know, you know, and stuff like that. So, is it still roughly the same things around?
That will all depend on the, um, the event, it could vary from seven to thousand.
This sold out event.
This was sixty-six thousand.
Okay, so, I mean, I don't, from what I was seeing, but I mean, yeah, I mean, you're, everybody's coming for an event at the same time, just like a football game. But I thought, you know, I, it seemed to me like what I, I was witnessing the traffic and granted, that was on Route one. You know, it was moving, everybody seemed to, the traffic was gone before the, uh, well before the event was beginning. So I don't think had anybody like, oh my God, I couldn't get in before the concerts and staff. So that was just an observation I had, looking at Route one all three days for hours. So, just wanted to throw that before you kind of told us what you thought.
Yeah, I can give a very quick summary. Um, one thing that I, I hear a lot is, oh, what did you do with the traffic? I'm gonna be a hundred percent forward and dead on, we will have traffic during game days, okay? Or concerts in Foxborough, okay? It's unavoidable when you introduce that many people into the community with the infrastructure that's on Route one. So the traffic management plan has not changed, it's the same one that's been in place. The traffic management plan in and around the side streets of Foxborough are the same ones that we've had in place for over fifteen years. The resident passes that you saw a lot of excitement about, we've been doing that for twenty years. We just have seen a change in the dynamics of drivers. We've seen, um, with them not showing up on time, the ride share has been, uh, introduced. So in this particular event, there was a lot of concerns, Friday night commuter traffic, there was a lot of messaging. Um, I started press conferences two weeks in advance, getting the word out on Channel five, four, uh, Channel twenty-five, you have to show up early. The, the, the infrastructure can only handle so many cars. If everybody shows up late, there is nothing, there isn't a traffic plan in the world that can make that many cars travel on the roads and be on time. So the messaging was, reach out to the fans, the craft group sent the message, there was a press conference done on Wednesday, messaging, messaging. The fans adhere to it, they showed up early and we got people in. Um, I, I even believe commuters going to work adjusted their schedule on Friday, so that they avoided Fri-, um, ninety-five and Route one as well. And it, it, it really paid off, our partners with the state police, the Lieutenant Brian McKenna, who's the barracks commander, we talk non-stop. Where, as this is unfolding in live time, we make adjustments if we can, but a lot of it is about messaging and, you know, driver confidence with the signage and they know where to go and, um, what lot to get to. I believe our satellite lots probably saw some of their best, um, Taylor Swift parking numbers, um, this year as well. That's usually doesn't happen, I think originally, Taylor Swift was around fifty-five, sixty. They did slowly release more tickets and extended behind the stage a little bit, so they pushed it out to about sixty-six, um, on Friday. Saturday, the weather was terrible, we did see a little backup on one forty, that's because who wants to go early and sit in the parking lot and get wet? I mean, but they still didn't come late, late to miss the event. And then Sunday was all hands on deck, they all showed up early and, uh, we even ended up with some extra guests as well who showed up app, without tickets. But we had planned that as well, we had done our research in Atlanta, Tennessee, and most recently in Atlanta, so we anticipated that. We had staff to address that. And the fans who showed up were the best, they were the best. We had maybe one or two custodies per night and they were, they adhered to all the directions, they adhered to security when the police officers asked them to move, no issues whatsoever, it was just really a great atmosphere. The amount, I can tell you my police department is spent, three concerts in a row is all hands on deck. Start in this event, this planning, this is probably, uh, no offense to the other performers, um, out there, this is probably get the most hype um, in the country, um, when she's playing. It absolutely, the draw, the enthusiasm. So the planning, um, we were also tasked with handling all of, um, Taylor Swift's private security as well, starting on Thursday all the way to Sunday when she left. And we had no flaws, no issues and, uh, the craft group was very, um, happy with what, uh, law enforcement did, both from the, the Foxborough police and I have to thank all of the police departments. I must have had about seven or eight chiefs and they allow all their staff to come over and all the offices, I mean, they were putting in long days. These were long, long days, the elements were great, standing positions, uh, traffic post positions, we usually would pull them. At, once we got everybody into the stadium, we could not do that this time, anticipating that ride share would try to inundate the back roads. And so we kept them there to kind of keep that hard perimeter. I will say that we'll sit here and we said we had a great success, but you're only as good as yesterday. So each event, we hope for the best, you could have a flip over on four ninety-five at two o'clock in the afternoon and that traffic management plan is gone. It doesn't matter what law enforcement does, it doesn't matter what parking, when you have that many cars trying to, um, make it down such a narrow infrastructure on Route one. It's, it's, it's tough.
Well, also, uh, you know, didn't affect right here locally, but also Janet Jackson was at Xfinity Friday night too. So the, so, I mean, not as big a venue, I mean, is here, but still you have another group of, of people, uh, you know, and like you said, Friday's a workday. So everybody's, you know, affecting four ninety-five, ninety-five. I, I thought, and I, you know, uh, our boss shut us down a little early cuz there was really not much business. So I left work and, um, at like eight fifteen, everybody was in that stadium. I came down, I mean, of course can't take the turns cuz they're, they're blocked, but I drove directly by the stadium to go home. And no traffic and, and saw all the policemen there. I mean, I thought from what I saw, look, bravo to everybody, I, I thought, you know, that, that was three consecutive days of you guys working hard, I.
This was weeks of planning to, to roll this out and a lot of these shows, when you're working with the director of securities, they don't, um, have all their plans in place until they get really close Wednesday, Thursday, and then we have to adjust. Um, and I just have to thank all the officers in my department, I can tell you, all the shifts got filled. Um, almost every officer picked up hours here and there just to make this work and to fill in all those critical spots. And I can tell you, Monday morning, we're still doing the, the, cuz we have to do all the billing for this. We have to bill out, we have to collect all the hours, all the patient, all the, and this is, my two staff do this, so they're still working on it right now. Because when there's one event, you can get to it the next day and you can process it. But when you have two and three events, you know, there's like thousands of hours that have to be accounted for and there's a slip associated with every sign in and sign out. But it was great teamwork by everybody and I just, you know, it's.
You know, I wanna say, uh, on social media, the perception is that it was very well managed by the police, I mean, it's really.
A safe and secure environment is our ultimate goal on these events. Um, some of the customer service aspects sometimes are secondary, but security is still our absolute number one goal. And we met that level. We also had a town to run, um, as well, so if you can imagine this many people, all of our hotels are filled. Our calls for service at these facilities were extremely busy as well. I believe we also ran a farmer's market, we had the last day of high school parade on Friday as well. Uh, I think we had a.
One lap around.
No, they don't get a lap, they get a half a lap.
That's true.
Yeah, that would be some of the benefits of the redesign of the common. But we had an escort, we had no issues with them, the kids were great. Um, just, and, you know, the residents, when you, if you do, you know, if you look on social media, the residents are so supportive and, and if, and they understand, when we have an event, it's, Foxborough changes. Like, you're going to, it's gonna impact your life, they adapt well. And, um, you know, I, I don't know if anybody's got a big list of complaints, I know there'll always be something that we can, we can do better. But I think overall, the whole team, the buy-in, um, with the stadium and the state police, uh, especially those guys and, and women are working end to end, when you're at ninety-five to four ninety-five, every turn, every intersection, they have to manage, they're long days. And the amount of pedestrians that are now crossing Route one because of the parking has really shifted to the other side is massive. And that's gonna impact the exit time, not because we can't, they can't get the cars out fast enough, is they actually have to get the pedestrians across. So, no matter what you do, you're not moving a car for, you know, thirty, forty minutes post-event.
Awesome, great.
Is that?
Yeah, that's great, thank you very much, thanks for stopping by.
All right.
Really, good job.
Good, good to let the town know.
Thanks, Chief.
Yeah, just a reminder, Founder's Day is, uh, June tenth, um, and Memorial Day is coming up Monday. So, um, any other, um?
Quick, quick thing?
Yeah.
Just thinking about, um, we see a lot of people come in and, uh, department heads talking about the grants, the great job they do, um, with grant funding for various projects and initiatives in town. Um, and it got me thinking about how does, how do we maximize grant opportunities in town? So I, I have no idea what the total opportunity is, what our slice of the pie is and what, um, you know, how, I, I feel like we do really well and maybe we just wanna think about how do we look at that, maybe some kind of tracking mechanism? Some kind of systematic tracking or to understand what we do and, and how well we do it and, and if there's other opportunities that we could take advantage of.
Yeah, so if I, if I may through the chair, we do get, uh, notifications, uh, basically every department head belongs to a, a statewide association as well as I get regular emails, uh, from our, uh, from our congressman as well as our state reps. Uh, Senator Feeney and, uh, and Representative Barrows are terrific communicators. Uh, so I'm also plugged in to the Mass Municipal Association, I serve at a few boards and committees there. So as programs roll out, we, um, regularly distribute things to department heads to look at, hey, is this a program or a grant program that we, uh, might be able to take advantage of? A lot of programs, a lot of the grants are, uh, need-based, so sometimes we don't qualify, uh, but ones that are competitive-based, uh, community compact programs, some of the mass work stuff, I think we're very much on top of those. So, uh, we know the regular grant programs, uh, been doing this for a long time. Uh, so we know the ones where we have projects, we're constantly having conversations about if we have a project, is there any grants that might, might help us out on this? And again, working with the folks at the state level, we're able to chase most of that, uh, most of that down. So I'd, I'd say we're very plugged in. Um, it's choosing, it's choosing, um, to apply for grants that we think we have a reasonable chance of obtaining. You know, uh, you can waste a lot of time applying for grants that.
Uh, you can waste a lot of time applying for grants that, you know, you just know you're not going to, uh, be successful on the other side. And as we get, we know folks, too, so even, uh, we know a lot of folks that are overseeing the grants, and we can have candid conversations, like, look, do we even have a chance at this? They'll be like, not, if you're not here, here, or here, don't bother. So, um, I think we're really do a great job of identifying and chasing down the grants that we have a, we have an opportunity for. So, um, maybe we don't do as good of a job on the flip side of plugging all the grants that we do, uh, we do obtain, but, uh, I don't think it's for lack of knowing what's out there or chasing, you know, I think we are discriminatory in terms of what do we go after and what, what's the best bang for your buck in terms of, um, chasing some of these grants.
So, it sounds like it could be a really good story, then, if we had some kind of tracking mechanism or reporting, uh, maybe as part of financial, um, trend monitoring to understand, you know, total volume, uh, win rate comparative versus, you know, year over, over time, or versus other communities? I'm just thinking out loud, but it's just something we've been thinking about for a while.
And they're skewed sometimes, you know, you get, uh, sometimes you're lucky, you just, you get an earmark, especially for the, uh, at the federal level, like, uh, for the sewer study, you know, there's a, you know, four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the big ones, you know, the mass grants, you know, the mass works grants, and then there's all sorts of, uh, smaller grants, community compact grants, uh, the, uh, the, uh, marketing grants that Paige Donkey was talking about tonight, so, uh, yeah, we can, you know, we try, as the department heads come in, to give you kind of a snapshot of what they're, what they've been able to obtain. Uh, what you don't see is that we're constantly distributing stuff. We will actually get lists as these grant programs come out, the state wants people to apply for them, so they'll mail them out, they'll email them out, we forward them out to staff. We'll discuss them at a department head meeting, is this something that makes sense? Do we want to put a team together to chase something? So, uh, yeah, I think, uh, I think we're pretty good in terms of knowing what's out there and, and, like I said, just chasing down the things that we have a good opportunity of obtaining.
Great, thanks.
Okay. Um, anything?
No.
For you.
Okay.
And, um, I know, um, we mentioned it a little bit earlier, but, you know, not on the air, I'd just like to congratulate, uh, Mr. Beck, uh, for winning, uh, the, uh, he's, I know, but we gotta, we gotta do it on air, you know, the volunteer, the community volunteer award at the Rodman, uh, uh, awards night, uh, last weekend, and, uh, he does a great job for us, he's always in that back room and, uh, has us on point, and, uh, congratulations, Mr. Beck.
Congratulations.
Absolutely.
All right, um, action items.
Action items. Motion to approve four one-day beer and wine licenses for Wormtown Brewery during the Patriot Place Pickleball Classic on, uh, June twenty-second through, uh, June twenty-fifth from twelve P M. to nine P M.
Second.
Okay. Uh, any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we have the, uh, Gillette Stadium, uh, motion to approve the north end zone extended hours request for work from seven to eleven P M. following conditions from prior requests at one Patriot Place until September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Uh, any further questions? They've done this before, for the most part, and they, they, uh, try to do anything a little bit later, quieter.
Lot of cleanup and logistics work. Uh, we have received no complaints.
No complaints.
Uh, border health has no issues, building department has no issues, police have no issues.
Right, awesome.
Sounds good.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.